Hi, Arnie.
Hi, Anne.
Well, there's Arnie. How you doing?
Hi, Rich.
Hey, Arnie.
Joe, how are you? Fred, Mike?
Okay, we're good to go.
Thank you, Allison. Thank you. So why don't we begin like we always do with a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands today under the indivisible liberty of the US.
We have a fairly short agenda this evening. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the October 26th meeting. Before I hear any motion, are there any requests for changes or modifications?
Not that I saw, no.
No.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion.
So I'll move it. I'll move for that.
Second.
Anne made a motion, second Michael Roy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes are approved as written. Next item on our agenda is an application by J.S. Penizzaro. This is relative. It's an initial presentation concerning a site plan for the property located at 4581 Enders Road, Manlius. This is tax map number 114-01-13.1. Could those people who are going to be speaking on behalf of this application identify who they are?
Good evening, folks. This is Matthew O'Neill. I'm with the law firm of Costello, Cooney, and Furon, and we represent J.S. Penizzaro. And we have Greg Scromo, who's available as the engineer on this, and I see John Dunkle on the call, too. Will John be speaking as well? I don't see his camera on.
Probably not.
Okay.
Might just be me.
Okay. Thank you, Matthew. Who would like to speak first and give us a general understanding of what you're attempting to do and what the site plan involves?
Sure.
Excuse me, Joe, would you mind if I asked a quick question before we got started?
You're gonna ask it sooner or later, so yes, whatever it may be.
Yeah, and this is really to Greg because he's the one that I talked to. But back in July, the first meeting in July, when we were reviewing the the plan to change the zoning, I asked if you had the write-in, write-out approval from New York State. You said you did. I asked if you could send it over to me. We did not receive anything. The second meeting in July, I asked the same question. You said you forgot or whatever, and you would get it out to me. I have not seen anything yet. Is it possible to get that very, you know, quickly as we sit here today?
Yeah, and I thought that we did send it in today. It was, the conceptual approval was given on several occasions by DOT. And it is just a conceptual approval because they will not give a firm approval until an actual site plan has been submitted and the data for that particular site. So I sent in the two emails to town today, so you should be able to get those. And, you know, that was part of the original approval process with the daycare because that's why we had to have the easement there. And we, the board wanted to make sure that that write-in, write-out.
We're hearing a lot of interference, Greg.
Yeah, I did not hear what you said. I mean, it was...
It was like a radio was going off in the middle of your talk.
Okay.
I think it's cleared out.
Is that better?
Yep.
Yes.
So I sent the two emails today relative to the conceptual approval for that write-in, write-out. And one, I think, was based, was way back when the Fast Track was being proposed, even before we, we weren't even involved in it at that point in time. And the other one was as part of daycare center approval. So those are conceptual approvals. They won't give us a firm approval until they actually see what is going on the site, which now that we have uses that we are proposing, we can finalize a new traffic study, and then they can actually give us the formal approvals for the uses. You know, so, you know, do I anticipate an issue? No. I mean, the Fast, the Fast Track would have been a much more intensive use, I think, than what we're proposing. And, you know, they originally approved the two driveways, one on Enders and the write-in, write-out on 92.
Okay, so just a point of clarification. You do not have an official approval by New York State DOT. They have indicated that it's a workable situation, but we need to know what you're gonna do exactly on that site. So you really have nothing, you've got nothing to deliver as far as the approval, correct?
I kind of disagree with that.
You disagree?
We have, we have, we have from DOT, the, basically, their concurrence that are write-in, write-out will be allowed on 92, and that the driveway will be allowed. Now, if there's other mitigation that comes about, that's a different story. So DOT does not give you driveway permits until they have a full understanding of what's gonna go on, on the site.
Okay, so the letters you sent today, I believe, came from your firm to Fast Track.
No, they're from DOT. They're emailed.
I did, I did not see anything from DOT.
Yeah, and they were just delivered, they were just delivered today. They were gonna be, we're gonna send them to the plant, we're gonna deliver and handle them to the planning board.
And Rick?
Yes.
I got verbal, I got the verb, same verbal from Betsy Parmly from the New York State DOT also last week.
And Rick, I'm not sure...
Conceptually, they're gonna approve it.
It's not verbal. I mean, it's been, it's been documented and right.
Yes, documented.
We've had plenty of discussions of DOT. We've done a couple of studies with them. You know, one was for convenience store type use, and one was for daycare with, I think, with medical and that in the old building that was there. You know, so now we've got it, we've got it converted to the, you know, high-turnover restaurant use and the bank.
Okay.
For work. With COVID, it's a matter of how we do it, is, you know, they're totally holding that up.
Okay, I want to add one thing. This is John. I want to add one thing to that for clarification, Rick, is we, originally, that when we sent the application, when Greg sent the application in the DOT a few weeks ago, it went to DOT. And they called, I know Doug Miller was one of the people that she talked to, Betsy talked, spoke to. And at the time, Doug did not know we had sent that application in. We didn't get a lot of, so since Doug didn't know a lot about it, it didn't sound, basically, at the end of the day, Betsy's gonna lean on the town as far as getting input, as far as, you know, it's, you know, if there's any issues. So I don't know if you were aware of that meeting, but we had called Sarah Bolinger, and Sarah spoke with Friteski and Doug Miller, you know, fully understanding what we were doing here. So to Greg's point, he's 100% right. They're not gonna stamp anything until we get it. But every, all the oars are going in the same direction here as far as the, is the town, Greg, and DOT. Okay, John, I understand what you're saying, and I hate to beat a dead horse here, but the town really has no bearing on what the state does. The state's gonna make a determination based on what the state wants, doesn't want, or whatever. That's all we can do is look at the write-in, write-out and determine whether or not it makes sense for the site plan that we're reviewing. So I'm not sure exactly what the state... No, exactly. Just for clarification, Rick, and if I wasn't clear, I said, I said that they called, they're basically calling for the town's opinion. So maybe I used the word clarification or whatever, but they just want an opinion. She says it's normal, everyday business. I don't care if it's in the way, if it's in wherever. The DOT is always gonna call the town and just kind of get their opinion. Yes, you are 100% right. It's their decision ultimately at the end of the day, but they're always gonna get the opinion from the town. And thus why Betsy had called Doug Miller a couple of weeks ago, then we called Sarah Bolinger, and that's when the discussion took place with Sarah and Doug, and everybody seemed to be on the same page. That's what I was trying to make clear. Okay, now, I'm glad we had this discussion. I'm sorry I interrupted your presentation, but I wanted to get, you know, a clearer picture of what's going on there. So I'm sorry.
Very, very fair question, Rick. Not, I, a very, very fair question.
Okay. That's all I have at this point. Thank you.
So, you know, back, back to the site, it's not a very different site plan from what the, what the board has seen before. I think, I think we first put out this site plan probably about four years ago as part of one of the zone change applications. And you may have seen it even at the last zone change meeting. Essentially, we have a bank use that's interested, and we have a high-turnover restaurant that's interested for a parcel. The bank, we scaled that down just a little bit. I think we had 3,500 square feet. It's down around 3,000 square feet with drive-throughs and associated parking. The fast food restaurant does have a drive-through, a little patio area out in front for outdoor seating. We're working on tweaking the site plan a little.
Does anyone have, have that on their computer that they can share? Greg, do you have it by any chance?
I can, I can pull it up. You're asking a lot of me, though.
What, tell, I'm sorry, I was trying to handle the feedback issue. Tell me which document I...
If you want to put up the rendered site plan from this morning that I sent, if that's possible.
Sure. Lisa, which document was that? Hang on, you're muted. Go ahead.
Lisa, you're on mute.
SP1.
SP1?
I believe it's that one.
Okay, give me one moment, and I will pull that document up right now. Just let me know if that's the right one.
That's fine. There's a rendered one, but that, this one does the same exact thing, basically. So what we have is, the bank is to the top of the screen, which is more of...
Sorry.
All right.
All right, go ahead.
The bank, which is, yeah, at the upper part of the screen, which is more like northwest. 3,800 square feet, has a drive-through. We are gonna modify that drive-through with the touch to make it, to make it sort of circulation has to go around the building, so we don't have as much congestion in the front. But...
Greg, Greg, I can't hear you. Are you talking about the drive-through for the restaurant or the bank?
Drive-through for the restaurant.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. And just something that came up in our internal review, we're gonna make a couple of minor changes to kind of keep circulation from getting bogged down. It's one of those things that's coming into, into light much more with the COVID era, where if anybody's gone through a drive-through and notices that the drive-through traffic has increased dramatically, and that's primarily because either no one wants to go into buildings, or, or as I've seen, somebody's, somebody's fast food type uses aren't even allowing people in the building. So it has, it has stormwater, which is primarily towards Enders Road and towards the, the western corner of the site. And other than that, it's, it's a fairly straightforward site plan. There are no variances required. Everything meets lot coverage and that sort of thing. There's, it'll be, you know, fairly heavily landscaped, and the uses fit within the current zoning.
Greg, this is Joe Lupia. I've, I've got the rendered site plan, and I've compared that to the site plan SP1 that you previously submitted, and I'm not seeing a difference. Is there supposed to be a difference?
Look at the drive-through entrance.
Of the bank or the restaurant?
Of the restaurant.
Allison, can you throw the other one up there? That one, yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't make it before we submitted to you. So we're gonna make a couple of changes. One is that drive-through entrance to the restaurant will be kind of like the write-in, write-out is, so that you, you can't come in Enders Road, take a left, and then try going to drive-through. You would have to go around the site and then come back in. And that's just so if queuing gets to be longer than that driveway, it won't stack up on New Enders Road. It'll, it'll have, it'll stack up internally to the site, and we'll widen out that driveway to kind of, for those peak periods, if it does ever get to there, at least we don't have to deal with that type of a backup. There's, there's ample storage right now.
Greg, excuse me, just to understand the traffic flow, is it coming off of Enders into the site?
Yes. Yeah, so you come, you come off of vendors and you take a left into the site. And from there, you can go to either a restaurant or a bank, or you could go straight through the daycare center parcel, and then take a left at the end of that driveway and still get into the site that way.
Greg, is this plan the one you're proposing, or is the other one? Which is most up to date?
This, this right now is the most up to date. You know, our goal today is, the plan is, is, I'm gonna say fairly complete. We've done some preliminary grading and that sort of stuff, but it's kind of irrelevant. Really, at this point in time, there's nothing crazy about the site. What we're really hoping to do is to make sure that, you know, we take it step by step, get this in front of the board, get comments from the board, and then go back to the drawing board and make whatever adjustments need to be made, and then get it back in front of the board. So we're figuring this is part of that iterative process that takes place between concept plan, which I would say was a previous one, to a schematic plan, which is this here, to where we get to a preliminary plan and then move forward. So today, what we really like to do is to find out from the board, you know, what do you like, what don't you like, you know, what should we look at as far as modifications go? So we can, you know, work on that for, for next meetings.
Greg, are you planning on submitting an amended site plan for the daycare center?
Well, we're gonna probably have to, because although this doesn't really impact anything other than the dumpster location. So, you know, everything else that's shown on that daycare plan today, and this plan was previously shown and spoken about, including that access out to Enders Road.
Are there any traffic, are there gonna be any traffic issues with the daycare center with this Enders Road entrance?
I don't see that. What we are looking at doing, and I'll put this on the table right now, is we're looking at taking and splitting the bank and high-turnover fast food restaurant up a little bit, spreading them apart. Okay, and then the driveway would be located at the second right, like if you come in, there's a, you could take a right to the daycare center. You go to the next one, and you could take a right into the daycare center. At that driveway there, you could take a left into our site. So we're looking at trying to minimize the backups onto Enders Road, partially because they're shared driveways. So, you know, you're gonna, you know, those are the kinds of changes that we're, we're internally looking at. Just did not get to making those changes prior to submitting to you guys, if that makes any sense. And what I'm saying is, if you look at, if you can see my pointer on here, right here is where we put a driveway that would come into, into the, the new site. So the, the, the fast food restaurant would move a little closer to Enders Road, and that driveway would be located there as opposed to right as soon as you come into the, the projects, like, you know, daycare center. And that's primarily because they're sharing driveways. So, you know, we do worry about a little confusion there.
If I could just jump in and ask a few questions that I have, Greg, if you don't mind?
Oh, I don't mind.
Okay, these are just, these are thoughts, these are comments. Number one, it looks like you'll be putting in some additional parking on what I'll call the driveway on the daycare center alongside that walkway leading to the north. Is that correct? They're not marked, but it looks like that's what you're...
Yeah, he's got them showing on there. You know, I don't know if we need those or not. Let me put it that way.
The, the other, the other thing, Greg, I'm just, like I said, I'm just gonna throw out things for thought. The, there is a current easement, or it's marked on this plan. It's also on the survey. On the Enders Road and that first left-hand turn into where the restaurant site is.
Yep.
And it's marked. And if you look at the right side, which I guess would be the, the east side of that easement, it's kind of an angled line. Pardon? It's kind of an angled line, and that line marks, and I looked at the zone change on that property, and it basically follows that, that line all the way to the back of the property where it's only 44 feet, 42 feet wide, which means the bulk of the driveline, and Jamie, this is more, if you haven't looked at it, just to let you know, because this was a discussion point before, but the bulk of that driveway leading north and then you turn left onto the bank site is outside of the zone change. Whether that matters, I don't know, but that's something that we need to take a look at when we review, I'll call it an amended site plan. The other thing is, when the variances were granted, there was a parking variance, and there was a lot coverage variance. And I, I'm doing this from memory, but I think the plan, the site plan showed 39% lot coverage without the parking, the, the bank parking, but, which was on Enders roadside plus where this new driveline is going. So one of the things, and I can't see if it's on this plan or not, but one of the things I'd like to know is, what is the lot coverage with these new parking spaces and driveline on the daycare center? Is it under the 55% coverage that was granted in the, the variance, or is it above that? So just when you begin to put together your plans, that's something that would be interesting.
Yeah, two, and that's a great point, Rich. The, and the second, and so if we came into the second driveway and the, the second, like, right turn on the daycare center.
Yep.
It appears that that, that that is still within that proper zone, put it that way, for, for the bank and, and, and the, and the fast food restaurant. The rest of it is not. And I think that the lot coverage zoning for the daycare, I thought was, we had a master plan which included parking, not only where we kind of have it shown now, but also along that whole left-hand side of that driveway on the daycare center site.
Yep.
Quite a bit of extra parking, and I'm pretty sure that that, that, that variance included all that, because I really wanted to make sure that, should that ever have to happen, it could happen.
I, Greg, I think you're right, because my recollection of the lot coverage without that parking was 39%, and the request was for 55%. So I'm sure the calculation was, hey, if we ever build this, we, we need to have that additional coverage, but I'm just curious. I think it's, I think it's, yeah.
We do have, we have, we have, the variance has us banking parking lot, parking spaces that we've never used.
Yeah, no, no.
That we never used.
I agree. I agree, and without the bank parking, it was 39%. I just want to make sure that we're staying under the 55% on this amended site plan, because if this is the plan that you're moving with, it, all the parking up there, I think, would need to be amended to show what you're proposing now. So the bank parking would go away, and this configuration would be the new configuration for that area.
Well, just to be clear, and I'm not sure how you're saying it. No, no, I, I think you're, we will never need more parking. We, we've got more parking than we need as it is. So we will never, ever need parking for the daycare. I mean, we, as Greg said, we put it in there as a backup, and it was kind of a variance, and that was it, but that's not even gonna come into play.
Well, but, but it need, it need to be put in there because the site plan needed to stand alone of whether it was a daycare center or not. It had to stand with the town code. So, Rich, I will check on that to make sure. I think it's a very good point. I think we will probably need to come in with an amended site plan for the daycare, because we're, not only are we adding, you know, that, that extra asphalt, but we got to relocate the, the trash enclosure. That sort of thing. So I, I need to go back in the whole record and look at all that.
Right, so, so we will also do that, because, you know, the question is, do we need, do we need to go back to ZBA for amended variances? And, you know, this board may want to recommend on that, and we need to look at that. So lot coverage and parking. Even though it was banked parking, it's probably a variance.
Greg, I'd like to ask you a question from a user point of view. It's Arnie Polten, son. Get in the car with me, and we're going south on Enders Road. We're gonna turn right into the driveway, and I want to go to the bank. So we turn 90 degrees to the left, and then immediately turn 90 degrees to the right. We're heading west now. And we're going past the restaurant. We're in the same line with the people who want to get restaurant food. I mean, that...
In, in this situation, you could be.
Okay.
So, no, 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 I, I, no, because, because that's the out. So the, the bank entrance, the drive-through is on the end at that point? If I remember, if I see, if I, so like you're in between the two stormwater basins.
I'm, I'm, I'm right just, I'm just south of the trees there that you've planted.
Okay.
Arrow is pointing west, so I'm going in the right direction. I'm going past the restaurant. I'm now gonna turn left again. I'm gonna turn farther left than the restaurant people, because they want to go to the, the window, and I want to go past them. And then I'm gonna make a 180-degree turn around that peninsula.
No, that's, that's strictly a drive-through there, and, and that second lane, there's an escape room for the drive-through.
So how do I get to the bank?
You would stay, you would come in under, you'd take a right, you'd take it to get left, you go down to the end of that drive-out, take a right.
Okay.
Go to the, to, once you cross that delineation line between the bank and the fast food.
All right. Restaurant. So far, so good. Now, I'm at the peninsula. I've got parkers, people parked on my left. I'm gonna take a 90-degree right to go into the ATM of the bank. I'm just wondering in my Ford pickup if there's enough room for me to make that turn, and then make that other turn, and then make the final turn of 120 degrees around that way to get to your write-in, write-out on 92. Just, just from a driver's point of view, in the wintertime, with some snow around and cars parked, are we able to be, gonna be able to manipulate a good-sized car or truck around the restaurant into the bank and then out again?
It, yes. So you're looking at that very thin peninsula.
Yeah.
Picture, picture what, what, you know, by time this, and you got a great point there, because the way it's shown, it looks very difficult, and it would be. What would end up happening in the real world is, when we get done with this plan, if we catch all of the things like that, you know, and everybody, and everybody kind of reviews this thing, is that peninsula would get shortened up about four feet? And that also, all of a sudden, gives you ample turning radius to turn into that drive-through at the bank. The other thing we could do is, you know, we, we've made the bank smaller. We just kind of shrank it and we left a bunch of landscaping there. We might rearrange the parking a little bit and make that, you know, spread those out a little bit. So, no, but I, I know what you're looking at. You're going, gee, I can't get around that corner in my, you know, F-150, you know, dual cab long bed. It's like, yeah, you're right. You'd have, you'd have a tricky little time.
Okay, thanks.
Greg, I, excuse me, I am interested in, in your plan, your, your proposed revised plan, and for our consultants to look at with respect to a... And, and for our consultants to look at um, with respect to a different entrance, I. It looks to me, you know, that it's way too close to Enders. Um, there's significant stacking issues on. Fast food and any kind of drive-through right now and. I, I'd be interested in whatever you would have about the, a potential user and what their stacking um. Requirements and experience has shown because it does not look workable to me. Um, I think that you're gonna have a stack up on Enders Road.
And, and that's why, I. You know, Jamie, right now, it is, it's always been something that we need to take into account. Um, because it seems like uh, a lot of these uses uh, can jam up traffic pretty, pretty good. And today, we've got a, several sites that we're looking at for our visible clients, which are just really stacking up. A lot on the roads. And that's why when John and I were sitting here looking at this thing together uh, on Wednesday. You know, his comments were. You know, we got to some about this drive-through and I said, well, you know, I'm gonna turn it so you can't come into it from Enders Road. And then we're trying to brainstorm a little bit. And that's why that driveway in from Enders Road. Into our site, I think really needs to be relocated. Uh, it would be about a hundred feet further away from Enders Road. And also um, that, that stacking on that whatever drive-through is there would totally be internal. I mean. If you stacked up the Enders Road, you'd have to have a, you know, fifty cars stacked up at that point probably.
So, Craig, Greg, just to visualize, when you say a hundred feet past would be kind of what, what we've been calling the peninsula, is that where?
Yeah, they pretty much come down, it, that peninsula would pretty much be split in half. And, and that drive uh, aisle into the site would be about where that peninsula is. It would be actually more like about where, yeah, about where that peninsula is and a little bit um, into that like. Uh, bypass lane on, on the uh. On the uh, drive-through. So it doesn't affect any setbacks or anything. We've got, you know, we've got ample road there. We'll make it a little, pinch a little bit on Enders Road, but nothing. Of any significance. And then that would take and allow us to. You know, kind of uh. Uh, eliminate that uh. That potential for traffic to be, you know, backed up onto the uh, any of the roadways. It would all be internal for, for the drive-throughs.
Greg, certainly that, that would help. And also you might want to look at the site. And maybe flipping the building and somehow having your drive-through in a different. Like, uh, further around the building, the, the stopping, the ordering spots and picking up spots.
I'm assuming, I'm not sure if this question is for Greg or for John or Stella or Matt, whoever. Do you currently have a bank you're negotiating with and/or a restaurant so that these are. Pretty much actual square footages and layouts and so on of the tenants? Or if you sell the bill, the, the property, whoever's gonna develop it, or are these just? Um, possible scenarios?
Hey, Rick, I'll let uh. Rich, I'll let uh. Matt answer that. I mean, we're. That's uh, we're always gonna be communicating with the town as we bend with people as they knock on our doors. Some of them want NDA, some of them don't or whatever. So we're, this is, we're, we're open book. With, with, with the town, we, you know, whoever might approach us or knock on our doors. So that I'll, I guess I'll, you know, I'll frame that answer like that.
Is there a way?
I just want to make, I want to make this clear and Matt's gonna say something. I mean. What we're seeing on paper is like, you know, and Greg said it in the beginning of the meeting, this is, there, there is. Uh, there is, you know, it, it, we gotta separate that. This is not. People that we're talking to right now and that this is what it exactly is going to look like. These are the type of businesses. And the type of in and outs and whatever. And this is exactly why we're having this meeting. Um, as is, but right now, there's, there's no names on it. It's A, B, C, X, Y, Z.
Okay, so you're taking our temperature to see if. This type of a layout, these types of uses are something that we'd like to work with. Because the layout may change depending on who the bank is, who the restaurant is, but you'd like to know if this is something we like, don't like. Want to modify or whatever. Is that really what you're looking for?
Yes.
I guess I would say yes. I mean, yeah, I mean, we're not, uh, I mean, those are the type of businesses that are. Interested in a corner and we're talking to. So I guess that, if that answers it, yes, that, that's what we're, you know, uh. That's, that's, this is, this is pretty much the, I, I guess, market classification of the type of usage for commercial aid. For that corner. So that goes into type of uses that, that we are. That we're working with.
Okay, I, pers- personally, you know, I look at this and I think there's some things that need to be changed, but a bank and a restaurant. Um, you know, depending on the size, the seating. The, the parking layouts, the detention and retention. I mean, I, it's something that I think. Looks okay and, and that we can work with going forward, but I'm just, as Lisa knows, I'm just one vote.
I do know that.
And you're breaking up. Break it up.
I think Ann is saying, can we switch to bank with the restaurant?
Yes.
Okay.
We can't answer that now.
Yeah, um. I, I think it, it becomes very tricky. So the site is, we do, we do these all the time. We've, we've done this for years. That restaurant is gonna want to be on a corner. The bank. Less important, you know, so flipping them becomes a, an issue of whether that restaurant would actually. Put up with being. You know, off that corner or not. And I, and I think that that would be a hard sell. You know, of course, in, in, you know, not that I, this layout that we've got here to. The parking, that sort of thing, you know, this is a very um, typical bank. If uh, John came to me with a dozen. Uh, different names, I could fit them in here without. Any significant change to the site. Um, same thing with the restaurant, you know, this could be, you know, you, you, you pick, you pick the use and I can probably put it in that square and. It would minor changes at work. So, but that flipping them would be a problematic type of, of a scenario. I think the, the sell, the sell that site to a, to a. Who would be, uh, they're, they're gonna want to be on that corner. And that's one of the reasons you don't have two fast food restaurants, to be perfectly frank with you.
Is, is the plan? To, and I'll give you the reason why I'm asking this question. Is the overall plan? For the Penasados to hold the property and lease it, whether it's ground leases or whatever, or, or is it to sell?
That's none of his business.
And the reason I asked that was to, just to let you know where I'm going with this. Is that there's a number, I believe, and Jamie, you would know better than I, but. If you have the traffic flowing from these two parcels to, you know, both parcels going to the other, we need a series or. Some cross easements. To allow this to happen that need to be recorded and taken care of and reviewed by. I think Jamie prior to. Actually approving a site plan.
Yeah, I think, I think.
They're gonna be needed regardless.
I think that, yeah.
They would, they would either be declarations of easement if they held on to them both themselves. Or they would be reciprocal um, easements if one parcel was sold, but it wouldn't have to be a permanent part of. This um, site plan.
Okay, that's what I thought and that's why.
Uh, I believe we already have cross easements in place.
Yeah, but we may have to modify that.
Correct.
And Jamie, from, and I don't know where we go with this, but it's something I raised before and that is that that driveline. On the north side of the property, which I think is the north, I don't see the, well, maybe it's the northwest. Uh, that goes along the side of the daycare center into the bank property. Is outside of. The CA zoning or a good portion of it is. And I don't know. If that impacts it, if we care, if it needs to be modified, but I'm just raising it that it's something that I think needs to be looked at.
I, I was not aware that it was outside of it, so we'll have to look at that carefully. It should not be.
Jamie, if you go down and look at, at Enders Road. And see what I think is the right side of the easement there and you can see that it's kind of angled. That angle continues all the way to the back of the property. So it goes from. An eighty-eight-foot wide. Uh, piece of property on Enders to a forty-two-foot wide on the north side of the property, which. Means most of that roadway is outside of the CA zoning.
And Rick, I think when we look at it, when I'm gonna take a better look at.
Greg, we can't hear you.
Yep, that darker portion. Is outside of it. Now, yeah, right. That's whether that's necessary for the commercial or not, you know, we can kind of all decide that in case we have to go back. I think what we're trying to put the driveway, I think is still within that commercial zone, so that may be okay. So why don't we get that commercial zone line delineated on here on the plan from now on?
Yes.
And we can take a.
That would be very helpful, yes.
Yeah, definitely.
And, and Greg, I, I think it was Greg that was speaking. Um, I. I don't know how that impacts it, but I remembered there was some discussion about driving from an RM parcel. That's the whole reason that we did the zone or. Or the town did the zone. Driving from an RM to a CA parcel. Was problematic and that's why I raise it because I don't know where that line is. I can guess, but I don't know exactly.
Yeah, no, you're absolutely right. To a higher zone or whatever, whichever one's lower or higher, but you know, going from one or the other was a problem.
And if, if I could go back, I think it was, is John on? Stella, is John with you? She's, she's muted.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I'm here, Rick.
Okay, I, you had said earlier, and I, again, I, I like to be clear on what we're looking at. You had said before that the parking that you have. At the daycare center is totally adequate. There's no need for other parking. And I, I won't disagree because I've driven by there. Several times and it seems like it's working the way it is. But it raises the question as why we're putting some additional parking along that driveline leading to the bank.
Well, Greg could probably answer that better. I think it's just more, was always more of a buffer and there was a variance or whatever. We. We kept it there. We kind of, I, I'll call it bankum or whatever, but I mean. Trust me, I, I didn't want to pave it in the first place, but we. We thought at the time it was a good idea and that's the way it's looking right now. So we kind of.
Let me, let me, um, let me clarify it, okay? It was, uh, it was not done by my decision or John's. It was my. Cat operator, my engineer.
Okay.
He just saw the old lines and he's, he put them on. So I mean, I, you know. It doesn't need to be there.
Okay, I understand, I understand this is very preliminary. I understand this is preliminary, there's a ways to go, but it's just something I, I wanted to ask.
Yep, yep, no, I, I, I think taking it out of there, I don't think you're gonna get any argument from myself or John and. There's nothing there that I think we've seen that triggers it, uh, justifying it being there.
Any other questions?
I, I, the only other thing, and I'm no traffic person, but the way that the um, we come off of ninety-two. Is that, is that the very best design to make sure that nobody ever even tries? To make the, go the wrong way.
They're pretty, uh, New York State DOT right in, right outs. And uh. I, I, you know, you can go anywhere from just paving it and striping it to actually putting an island in there. Um, we're showing an island in there, which is the biggest deterrent. Now. You know, will you, you know, it, can I, you're always gonna get somebody that's gonna. You know, take that left in there from ninety-two because they're just, you know, a knucklehead. And, but you know, it's the best attorney you can have and still maintain a safe access for right-ins and right-outs. So I mean, you know, we would, we would put that in as an island. Um, so it's not just a striped island, it's an actual raised island.
Yeah, that is, I, I will admit because I've, I've dealt with this before, that is. Pretty much a standard way that the state likes to do it, but I'll tell you, I've seen people that. Will turn left from Route ninety-two into that uh, right land. There, there's nothing you can do to stop it other than. Put that. Curbing in a medium.
A median in the middle of the road is about the only way to stop it.
Yeah, and they'll still try it.
You know, Rich, on, on the still try it idea. What's the likelihood of somebody coming in on Enders and trying to, to, to backdoor the exit and skipping the light at the corner?
That is a very potential problem and.
If they come in Enders and go by the daycare center. And out this, out the right hand or turn left and go out.
That, that is something we need to consider as we move forward with this because. You know, especially at eight o'clock in the morning where you may have ten or fifteen cars backed up. Two turns at the light, I don't want to wait. I'm gonna cut through this project and ride out and. Continue on. So that is something that we need to consider.
And children.
And the children dropping off, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, great point.
Which I guess leads to the next question. Is there a need, and I guess you guys know this better than I do, but is there a need for that driveline at all? Is there a reason why we want to have access to a right-in, right-out from a daycare center as opposed to just cutting it? On the property line and just using it for the bank and the restaurant? And you don't have to answer now, just throw that out there to give some thought to.
Yeah, I'd like to give some thought to that. That's something worth considering though.
Which Mike would take care of your, you know, your question, I think.
Yeah, well, I, I just know that people are creatures of habit, you know? If I can beat the light and save myself two minutes. Or five minutes or whatever, you know, I will. I don't mean me personally, but I mean, people do that.
It'll take a week for them to figure it out and then they'll do it all the time.
Yeah, exactly.
Put a, put a manless police officer in that. Be a lot of trespassing fines.
Well, a lot of times they'll put speed bumps in, but from a snowplowing standpoint, they're a pain.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, Greg, anything further on your presentation?
Not really, no, not from my end.
And Greg, what do you want to do next?
Well, give us a, give us a little time to, you know, modify the site plan. Um. Way in some of these uh. Thoughts that we got from the board, do a little research on these uh, easements and. Variances and that sort of thing. And then we'll, uh, we'll hopefully be able to get a new site plan of, you know, in front of the board.
Joe, if I could just make a recommendation because these two properties. Are tied in together. And we know there's gonna be some amendments to the daycare center site plan. Maybe it'd be good if we just move these things forward together. Even though they're two separate parcels, they're interrelated that. Might be easier to look at.
I think we really need to.
Yes.
I, I think we need to do the modified site plan and lot two simultaneously with lot one.
I think that would help us, yes.
It would also help greatly if we could get this stuff more than a couple of days before the next meeting.
The rendered site plan, we, we did get you late. The other one, I thought we got, you know, um, reasonably in time, but. I, I. We're gonna do the best we can and, you know, if the board feels that we didn't get it to them in time and we need, you know, the board needs more time, we understand that. But, you know, we'll turn around as quickly as we can. If we get, if we get, if it's ready three weeks before the meeting, we'll sub, submit it to you three weeks before and you guys can have some extra time, you know, that, that, we don't have a problem with that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, that. You know, I have one, I have one more question about traffic flow. And, and this might be off the wall, but. If you look at the diagram that's up there right now. Would it help the restaurant to move the entrance to the drive-through up? To like where your third tree spot is? So there was a direct drive-through?
No, you'd have no stacking, Mike.
Well, yeah, but you got two drive-through lanes.
Uh, I believe there's just, one's a drive around, the other one is a drive.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, one is.
Well, I was just looking at, again, traffic pattern.
Yep.
And, and, and remember that my understanding, what I'm hearing from Greg is that. Uh, where that third tree up is, may, will be where that uh, mo- move, where they're moving the, the drive-through. So I, I feel like that's.
Well, more to drive in the driveline, the, the driveway in.
Right, 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 yes, I misspoke.
Yep. So I, I'd like to get, I'd like to get the revised site plan and some of these, some of these uh. Details back to the board, uh, you know, as soon as possible. Um, we're gonna, we just got feedback on. um, revising this traffic study with the COVID era because obviously we're not going to go out there and do traffic counts, I hope at this point, because, you know, who knows how to reflect. Um, so we're going to get that revised for the state. So we get the, their, you know, hopefully their concurrence on everything. Um, so yeah, we'd like to turn the stuff around, uh, you know, it's not going to be, you know, I don't know when the next meeting is, but, uh, because I think the board meets.
Uh, next meeting would be, uh, December the fourteenth. We're getting feedback again.
Yeah, well, you know, for the fourteenth, you know, to get everything back to you guys by the first, uh, would be difficult unless. So we'll see if that makes any sense.
Can you do that one more time, Greg? I'm sorry.
Yeah. Um, we'll try to get a revised site plan back in front of board and whether, um, you know, we've, uh, we have some of the data that we're looking for as far as, uh, um, the easements, um, locations, uh, relative to the, uh, zone change, uh, variances, um, some of that sort of stuff, the new driveway location, uh, back in front, in front of board, uh, if we can prior to the next meeting. Um, but we're not going to be able to have a full, you know, blown package to you with, with a lot, you know, a lot more than maybe something, a site plan that addresses some of these concerns.
I, I, I think we got a long way to get there anyway.
Yes, yeah.
All right. Well, well, Greg, get them into us and then we'll see what we can do about the calendar.
Absolutely. Much appreciated.
Okay.
So ju- just to clarify, is there a, a date by which we, if we get everything, uh, you know, in, uh, that we'll go ahead and have it on the, uh, be able to discuss this further on the fourteenth?
Uh, the deadline to submit is December third.
Okay. And we'll see what we can do.
Okay. Anything further on this application? Okay, we have, uh, and then we'll stand adjourned on this until we, uh, hear from the applicant with revised plans.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Thanks.
Thanks, Joe.
Folks, we have no other business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Therefore, Fred.
I moved the meeting adjourned.
Second by Richard. All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned until December fourteenth if we have any new business by then.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Indeed, indeed.
Okay, see ya.